Okay. All right, I'd like to call to order the January 23rd, 2024 meeting of Columbia Heights School Board, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Michelle, will you do the roll call, please?
I will.
Palmer.
Here.
Granland.
Here.
Hool.
Here.
Maderas.
Here.
Mueller.
Here.
Petway, here. Superintendent Stenvik.
Here.
Thank you, Michelle. Our mission is creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong, all succeed. Our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. First, we have our agenda, approval, adjustments, and announcements. Can I please get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Michelle, in a second?
Second.
Second by Mary. Any discussion? Hearing then, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Next, we have our announcements. On February 6th, Tuesday, at 6:00 PM is our regular school board meeting here in the community room. February 8th, Thursday, is a Flex Learning Day. February 9th, there is no school. February 19th, Monday, there is no school and the district is closed. February 20th, Tuesday, at 5:30 PM is our work session in the community room. And February 20th, at 6:00 PM, is our regular school board meeting in the community room. Please take note of these school board meetings that are on the 6th and the 20th, which are not the first and the, or excuse me, the second and the fourth Tuesdays. Due to special elections and caucus nights, we had to move those meetings. Next, we have our communication to the board. At this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the school board. The board will listen to the brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that the administration follow up. The board will not take action at this meeting on requests presented at this time. Time will be limited to three minutes per speaker. All right, we are coming back. We had our citizen and employee representatives addressing the board. We had teachers come and speak to us related to, for topics related to class sizes, caseload caps, and the impact that caseloads have on inclusion and equity, EL and special education supports, curriculum concerns, needs for counselors, EL caseload concerns at multiple schools. Next, we'll move on to our consent agenda. Our consent agenda includes the personnel report from January 23rd and the treasurer's report for December, January 23rd, 2024, and the treasurer's report for December 2023. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
I'm gonna go Julie, in a second.
Second.
Second by Laura. Any discussion? Hearing then, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Thank you. Next, we'll move on to our acknowledgement of contributions. This is a resolution, so I will read this. All right, acknowledgement of contributions resolution. Minnesota Statute 123B dot zero two permits school boards to receive for the benefit of the district bequests, donations, or gifts for any proper purpose, and apply the same to the purpose designated. On that behalf, the board may act as trustee of any trust created for the benefit of the district and for the benefit of the pupils thereof. Therefore, be it resolved by the school board of Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District Number 13 that the school board accepts with appreciation the contributions detailed in the background in the amount of $10,654.73. The background includes monetary donations. A donation of $750 was made to the activities, was made to activities from Columbia Heights Athletic Boosters to support the dance team. A donation of $2,500 was made to activities from the Columbia Heights Athletic Boosters to support wrestling. A donation of $1,000 was made to activities from the Columbia Heights Athletic Boosters to support the science bowl. A donation of $10 was made to Columbia Heights Public Schools from anonymous to help boost CHPS student literacy skills. A donation of $75 was made to Columbia Heights Public Schools from Rob Butte to Columbia Heights Public Schools. A donation of $125 was made to Columbia Heights Public Schools from Gina Anderson to Columbia Heights Public Schools. A donation of $100 was made to Columbia Heights Public Schools from Gina Anderson to help boost CHPS student literacy skills. A donation of $75 was made to Columbia Heights Public Schools from Melissa Lyon to Columbia Heights Public Schools. A donation of $50 was made to Columbia Heights Public Schools from Mary Granland to Columbia Heights Public Schools. A donation of $150 was made to Columbia Heights Public Schools from Bob Bessinger to Columbia Heights Public Schools. Do I have to read the two Columbia Heights Public Schools each time? A donation of $225 was made to Columbia Heights Public Schools from Nick Zeimert for Columbia Heights Public Schools. And a donation of $50 was made to North Park School for Innovation by Zach Garman to North Park School for Innovation. A donation of $4,440 was made to Columbia Heights Public Schools from James R. and Patricia Heemack Fund of Minneapolis Foundation to student involvement in the JA Biz Town. Yep, Junior Achievement Biz Town. A donation of $250 was made to Valley View from Christine Levens for new risers for music class. A donation of $40 was made to North Park School for Innovation from anonymous for school supplies. Also included is value and kind. A donation was made to Valley View Elementary from Donors Choose for Christina Crohn's third grade class. The estimated value is $549.73. A donation was made to Columbia Heights High School DCD Special Education Room from Naizat Calderon, and I apologize if I mispronounced that, for supplies needed, for items for LifeScale Special Education Program, estimated value of $500. Total fiscal year 2023-2024 monetary contributions to date is $48,818.35. Can I get a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Julie, in a second?
Second.
Second by Michelle. Any discussion? Mary?
I mean, per usual, we're so blessed to have so many people helping out our schools and investing in our staff and our students particularly. So thank you all very, very much for all that you do.
Agreed. Thank you. Any other discussion? As this is resolution, this is a roll call vote. Michelle, will you do the roll call, please?
Yes. Palmer?
Aye.
Granland?
Aye.
Hool?
Aye.
Maderas?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Petway?
Aye.
Thank you, resolution passes. Next, we have our discussion reports and information items. We'll start with reports from members of the board. We'll start with Jessica.
Oh, okay. Well, good evening. I attended, as did all of you, the work session that we hosted at Highland Elementary last week. I just wanted to note, I know it's all over the website if you go to any of the Columbia Heights school pages, but we are hosting work sessions out at our school building sites through the spring. And so it was really exciting to have that first work session discussion out at Highland last week. And so there's a schedule of those up on the website for people to join us. And our hope is that it's a little bit more accessible to attend a work session and be, observe the discussion around important issues in the district. If it's out at a school building site that you're used to, your family's used to, maybe aligns with some other activities that are going on in the community. So that was really great. I also attended the Columbia Academy conferences last week and saw all of the turnout there with their arena-style conferences in the gym, as well as attended the Policies Subcommittee, my first Policy Subcommittee meeting right before this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Julie?
I also attended the work session last week. And I too was really happy that we were offsite from here. I think it was a little more relaxed environment. We're discussing the, the reading, science of reading, and doing a class on that, and we're discussing it. So I think it's, it's really important for us to connect with our teachers that are also doing that, and I really enjoy it. I also attended the policy meeting just before this meeting. And I've also reviewed the November financial statements that were provided, the treasurer's report that was provided, and have selected my samples for this week's review, which I will be meeting on Friday with the Superintendent Stenvik. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Laura?
Okay, I'm thinking back here. Actually, it's been a really busy couple of weeks here. I think going back to our last board meeting, I did attend the Leadership Conference and actually had the pleasure of being able to sit on a board with our superintendent to talk about our student school board member program and what we were doing and hoping to see where we could go with that. That, that was, that was a really cool experience, and I really, really enjoyed being, being a part of it. I also attended the, the Work Study Session last week as well. It was great getting out in the schools and sitting in that little library with those little itty-bitty chairs. I felt right at home. And, and going over this curriculum, the science of reading, it's, it's, it's actually, it's a very, very, very interesting course. And I, I look forward to completing it and having more discussions, as well as, I'm very thankful that we have the opportunity to understand, you know, what type of tactics and different supports that we're actually offering to, to be able to improve our outcomes, because we know, we know everybody works really hard. You know, we're just hoping that we have better, better tools to, to help you. And after that, I also attended the 916 Board Meeting. That's the monthly beating, meeting, where we, we had quite a bit of discussion on welcoming some new board members and looking forward to seeing what's happening there. I actually, I do want to add one thing, is that you'll notice that everybody did get an invitation to be able to visit the various sites. And I definitely recommend that. Our students do actually, when we need to have them placed, they do go to these facilities. So understanding maybe what these facilities offer, you know, maybe, maybe it gives us a better understanding of how to better support our students when they come back to us. You know, but I think it's important that we know that as well. We already know that the staff is aware, you know, but we're making decisions that affect them. So I'm just gonna put my two cents in there. And then I attended the, the Community Engagement Committee, so, and welcomed our new board chair over there. So thank you, Mary, for joining us with her 28 different colors of pens and her fancy little notebook. So, super organized. It's, it's good to have you. Michelle, you're probably gonna want to talk about, a little bit more about that, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
I tried to trim it down, but it really was a couple of busy weeks.
Definitely. Thank you, Laura. Michelle?
Hello, everyone. I've also had quite a busy beginning of the year. I attended the MSBA two-day Leadership Conference as well. It was very fun, which is crazy to say. But there were a lot of workshops, there's a lot of information and a lot of networking with different districts and things like that, because every school board is represented just about in Minnesota. And so it was awesome to see everybody come together and all the vendors and things like that, and what they have to offer our school districts. It was a good experience. I did my board member interview with CISO, who are doing our strategic, helping us with our strategic planning. And that was fun to be able to give my own individual, I love you guys, but give my own individual thoughts as a board member to someone and, and be heard. So that was a good experience. I attended last week's work session as well at Highland, which was fun. I also attended Family Game Night at Valley View, which was a lot of fun. I got to play some Gaga Ball, finally, which, you know, yay. The kids loved getting an adult out, so I was that adult for the night. And I also attended the Subcommittee on Community Engagement meeting before this one. And we also had our school board representative, Carolyn Raleigh, there from, from the high school. And it was fun to kind of pick her brain and just listen to, to the ideas that, that flow in a, in a different area that we may not always know or, you know, be privy to. So that was definitely a great experience. And that's all for me. Thanks.
Great. Thank you, Michelle. Mary?
Oh, boy. Okay. Sorry, guys, you guys are in for it too. Um, so last week, I volunteered at Columbia Academy in the Media Center, still working hard to get books out for kids, including more accessible books. So that's been really fun. Attended my very first chair meeting last week, which was great. And then our work session at Highland, which as a Valley View parent was weird because the, they are flopped. So if you've been in both of them, you know, otherwise, you'll just have to show up one of these times, so. Um, and then I also spent 12-ish hours on Saturday with our robotics team. We had our qualifiers for state. We had the most robotics teams present out of any other group there. We had five teams of varying levels. We had sixth graders coming in who've never done robotics before, up to 10th graders who have been here and done it for a few years. And it is amazing to see. Really wonderful to see how these kids come in and do all of this one wonderful, fantastic work. And they can make robots do lots of things, like fire a paper airplane this year, which was really cool to see kids figure out how to do these things. And a massive congratulations to the Cyber Knights who are going to state, which was a wonderful way to end that. So kudos to all of those students participating. And just a massive thank you to all the parents, but especially a big thank you to Ms. Orcutt, who has put in countless hours, not only with our students after school. It is the longest season. It starts the week before school starts, and robotics just ended. So props to all those students who really focus on that. Also, I attended the Community Engagement Subcommittee prior to this. I also attended the conferences at CA last week, talked with a lot of families. Parking was interesting because they also had the, the Family Game Night over at Valley View. So I did not make it to that, unfortunately. But I had my board member interview with CISO and just a lot of conversation, I mean, 12 hours with CA parents, right, and staff. And lots of conversation with students and parents and staff over the last few weeks, talking about all these things. So thank you very much.
Great. Thanks, Mary. For my report, last week, I had the chair meeting prior to the work session. I agree with all of you. I want to thank the Subcommittee on Community Engagement, who came up with the idea to have us travel for work sessions. February's work session is actually, we're not traveling, we're here. So as people plan, just because we have a regular school board meeting immediately following. But it will be great to get us out, and hopefully, if people want to attend and hang out at our work session, they can do that. So that was wonderful. I had several conversations with Superintendent Stenvik. I also had my board interview with CISO in preparation of our strategic plan. And I'm guessing all of you did, if you didn't mention it. I think when I had mine, they said that there was only one left. So I did also attend the Subcommittee on Policy, and as mentioned, we had new policy member, Jessica, and then chanced our student representative and joined us as well. Let's see. And then, one thing I do want to comment, I really loved our discussion that we had on the science of reading at our work session last week. I'm looking forward to discussing, discussing all of that with you in February. I really liked how we were looking at ways that we could integrate what we're doing in strategic plan in terms of what's happening in the classrooms with literacy to make valuable measures. So I really enjoyed that conversation. So thank you all for that. And I, can we say we sort of had a very short chair meeting right before this? It was five minutes? Okay. And I believe that was it for me. Superintendent Stenvik, do you have a report correspondence for us?
Yes, lots going on. I will keep it brief, however. First, we are closely monitoring enrollment at Columbia Academy, and we are nearing capacity at that building. So as the board knows, there's only one legal way to close to open enrollment, and that is based on capacity. So the board can expect a request to take action to close Columbia Academy to open enrollment, likely at the next board meeting, so I'm forecasting for you there. Today, Coordinator Emily Gartner, Director Tuckrell, and I attended a meeting at the, one of the nine service cooperatives in the state, so the Metro Cooperative Brightworks, to provide input on plans for carrying out the REED Act and the Minnesota Multi-Tierce Systems of Support under the Compass umbrella, lots of acronyms. This is really going to be a significant undertaking for all Minnesota school districts, and there are a lot of pieces that are still in development. And we are definitely seeking clarity from both the Department of Education and the Service Cooperative for moving forward with that. The American Indian Education Program is running a series of regalia-making. So over the weekend, I got to participate in this room to see the students making amazing ribbon skirts and ribbon shirts and parents helping, and then, of course, everything under the direction of Yolanda Dorsey. So really excited about that. And I can't wait for the powwow. I believe we said it's May 31st on a Friday evening for the students to wear their regalia. Lastly, this week, we are celebrating our paraprofessional staff. So it's National Paraprofessional Week. That includes educational assistance, bilingual homeschool liaisons, student support, and classroom assistance. I'm so impressed with this group of educators. When I'm out in the buildings, I see paraprofessionals assisting students in classrooms, in the lunchrooms, in playgrounds, connecting with parents, providing care for children, particularly children with very unique needs. So from the bottom of my heart, a huge thank you to the Columbia Heights Public Schools paraprofessionals. And I think there's some fun things in the works planned for, to honor and celebrate them this week. And since our last board meeting, I had communication with each of the board members. So thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Next, we'll move to our English learner program update with Director Nimbley. Executive Director Nimbley, excuse me. And I apologize, and Sarah Baumann, EL Coordinator.
It's as if I've never used Zoom before, so bear with me. All right, I think we're good to go. Good evening, Chair Mueller, members of the board, and Superintendent Stenvik. I'm here tonight with our EL Coordinator, Sarah Baumann, to give you an EL program update. Our mission in Columbia Heights Public Schools, creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong, all succeed. All our core values have been embedded in our presentation tonight. And this is a governance, it's an informational session presentation. And I'll turn it over to Sarah Baumann to start the presentation.
So, hello, everyone. I'd like to share some EL background information about language acquisition. There are two different categories, BICS and KELP. And as you can see on the slide, BICS is basic interpersonal communication skills, and then KELP is cognitive academic language proficiency. BICS is usually considered the acquisition of social language, and research shows that it takes about one to two years to develop. And KELP is considered the academic language to be successful in school. And students should be able to attain KELP in about five to seven years. So overall, it takes about four to seven years to become proficient in a new language.
Where you move on. Could we minimize the, the camera part of it?
Yeah.
We have, we also have that.
We can do that? No, no, I mean, for people who are here.
For people here, yeah.
Over there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks so much.
Ready for the next?
Yeah. All right. So next, I'd like to share some background on the LEAP Act. So in 2014, Minnesota passed the LEAP Act, which stands for Learning English for Academic Proficiency and Success. This act increased emphasis on English learner support and is embedded into many existing statutes, including early childhood, curriculum, instruction, higher education, adult education, and teacher licensing. The law requires educators to be skilled in developing English language proficiency for multilingual learners. To help develop English language proficiency, Minnesota joined the WEDA Consortium, which stands for World Class Instructional Design and Assessment. And WEDA focuses on academic language development by providing standards, language assessments, research, and professional development for educators. So in 2020, WEDA released a major update by developing the four big ideas that anchor the standards. There are equity of opportunity and access, integration of content and language, collaboration among stakeholders, and functional approach to language development. With this addition, they, they also provided more clarity and detail in their standards for EL and mainstream teachers to guide instruction and encourage collaboration. So along with providing standards, WEDA provides EL assessments. One of those is the Access for ELLs, which is coming up very near. This test is required by both federal and state statutes for multilingual learners receiving EL services and measures their language growth in the four modalities of listening, speaking, reading, and writing. The results not only help us understand their current English proficiency level, but it also guides us in making informed decisions about the appropriate support and resources they may require for continued success in their academic, academic achievements.
To continue on, I would like to emphasize that the English language program has two components. There is the EL Plan of Service, and then there is an annual budget that we receive to be able to deliver the services. And so supporting EL students from an EL program requires two things. Number one is that our students will attain English language proficiency so that they can be successful in school. And number two is their ability to access content standards in the mainstream classrooms. And so part of the EL Plan of Service, there are four components. So when new student enrolled into our district or any other district, there is an identification that we use a language survey to identify if they qualify for English language services. And then, once they enter the program, then we begin servicing them using the LIEP. But part of the, the service that we provide is to ensure that students are able to exit the EL program as they become proficient in the English language. And so, once they exit the English language program, and there is a, you know, we measure that through the access test to the four modalities that Sarah Baumann was just talking about, listening, reading, writing, and, listening, writing, reading, and speaking. And so, once they've exited the EL program, they're still our students, they've entered the mainstream classroom, and now they can continue their education without the EL support. So some students do it, and some stay in it for a long haul, as Sarah mentioned, and it takes up to seven years. So Title III, to speak in financial language, is the funding that come and support EL services in our school district, as well as other school districts. And the aim of Title III, the purpose of Title III is to, ensures that English language learners and immigrant students attain that English language proficiency and meet challenging academic, academic achievement. So the key activities that we use the funding for is for teacher support. There is also coordination, so Sarah, who's our EL coordinator, is funded and paid out of that. And then there is professional development, to which we'll speak about more later on. There is also supplemental language support, that we will also share some example of what we've been able to do. And then there is the great component of family involvement that you know of some, and we'll share how we do it in the EL world as well. So Title III, it's a federal grant, right? It comes from the state, and it's strictly to be served for EL students and EL services and support. And so Columbia Heights Public School in 2023 received about $139,000. And in 2024, it's about $147,499. Part of the requirement of the federal government is that we also service immaculate conception, which is a parochial school right in Columbia Heights. And their portion of the federal funding is also highlighted before us. So in total, the district received all the funding for the federal program, but there is the portion that is calculated for Immaculate Conception. And we meet with them two or three times during the year to provide services, to discuss their funding, and to be able to provide a report back to MTE. So our English language learners program has grown. And so before, you read some trends that we've highlighted. So when we go from 2019 to 2020, starting at the bottom, you can see that we went from 1,051. And today, these are numbers for this year pulled from January 10th. We're at about 1,509, so almost 400 some students that we've grown over the past five years. So when you look at the trend, you know, we used to say one in three students in our district is an English language learner. And now it's slightly a little over that, and we're pushing for the 50% mark. So if some data broken by school, you can see that almost all of our schools are pushing for that 50% mark. And the highest being Columbia Heights High School. Although they have the most students, you know, they're at 37%, it's because of the proportion of total EL students compared to non-EL students. But I think it was echoed perhaps in some of the public comments that you heard, that our EL numbers are growing. And it is good, and it does some burden as we try to educate students in our district.
So I'd like to share the top five languages in our district who may or may not be receiving EL services. As you can see, that Spanish is the predominant language, following Somali, Arabic, Aromo, and Mong. So in order to help with our EL population, there are the numbers of the EL teachers at each, these are the numbers of EL teachers at each school site. And looking from 2023 to 2024, we added additional staff since EL enrollment has increased. And to support that, we hired six more EL teachers.
And I have to say, you're probably looking at a correction at Highland that said four, but it's actually three students. So these are the correct number, went from 17 to 23 students.
Teachers.
Teachers.
Teachers. Not student, teachers.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Another change for this school year to support the increase in EL student enrollments was adding two bilingual EL education assistants at Highland and Valley View. We also hired a district EL EA in order to make the enrollment and EL identification process more efficient by having the EL screening be completed at the placement center. This helps teachers and admin to determine proper placement and the supports needed for the students before they enter into the school. We are also supporting the EL teachers by holding monthly meetings to check in with ME regarding programming and needs. They also have weekly PLC meetings and quarterly collaborative meetings to help support with various EL trainings and certifications. And then, we would also like to note that the EL program is aligned with the World's Best Workforce Plan. Our mission is to hit all of these points on the slide by providing supports and resources in order to be successful in their educational journey. And then, one resource we'd like to highlight is language supports. So we have homeschool liaisons to communicate with our multilingual families and support the EL students at each school site. We also offer translation and interpretation services to help communication and understand report cards as well. We provide home language resources like bilingual dictionaries and books. And lastly, online platforms such as Language Nut and Raz Kids are helping students develop language and literacy skills.
So as mentioned previously on a slide, there is also a requirement in Title III that we have to have this EL Family Night to make sure that we're communicating with parents of our EL students, the support that is provided to them, and opportunities in school and within the community. So all schools are required to convene an EL Parent Night annually. DL Coordinator Sarah Bowman is always participating in the support while there is an EL night. And this also include Immaculate Conception. Last year, I think three, if not four, school conducted their EL Family Night at the Public Library on Central Avenue. And then, starting last year at North Park School for Innovation, there is a volunteer who has been teaching English to our EL families. And that has continued again, and they started in, I think, two weeks ago. And we actually have two groups, because there are the group from last year that wanted to continue, and then there is a new group of parents who are starting. And we also provide, you know, English language support through ABE for parents who enrolled. Some of them do it online, and very few classes are in person because their program is full. And then, I think a couple of the board members participated in the Community Resource Fair. And as you may recall, this room here was filled with community organizations, which was an effort that, you know, the homeschool liaison, along with the Placement Center and the EL Department, wanted to provide support for new families who have arrived so that they know where to find the resources, whether it's employment, whether it's health-related, or whatever other resources, food and nutrition and all that. And so, we've continued to support our family through monthly onboarding learning in this room, as well as at some of the schools, they do their own special program of parent academies, where they continue to want to empower parents by showing them what's available for their children at the school as well as in the community. And EL professional development is something that we take seriously because, you know, with a district, with a little over one-third of their population that is EL, we have to make sure that each teacher is teaching with EL in mind. And so Sarah Bowman, our coordinator, has done a great job providing professional development à la carte based on school request. We've done pretty much two years in a row at the high school. The high school principal, Mr. Wayne, has made sure that the focus of the professional development is EL. So during their four district professional development, we've consistently gone over and over to support teachers. And Sarah, this year, has completed two, one at Highland, one at North Park. And tomorrow morning, she is doing one at Columbia Academy. So, you know, that's a way that we find to be able to support the general ed staff, but we also focus on supporting EL staff to continue to teach and meet the needs of our EL student. So professional development for teachers with specific strategies and working with students are the ones that we provide. And then, the EL Educational Assistance also supports with academic learning inside the classroom. From previous slide, you saw that at Highland and at Valley View, we also added an EA for EL. It wasn't a teacher, but it was two EA EL. And finally, DL Coordinator also provides support to Immaculate Conception, as mentioned before, because they also have an increasing number of EL students. And then, summer school. We always find it a benefit to continue providing support for EL students during the summer for two reasons. Number one, it takes up to seven years to become proficient in the English language. But also, number two, in the past years, we've seen that our influx of EL student has come beyond the first day of school. Speaking, even now in January, continue to see families that are coming. So in order to close that achievement gap, we want to make sure that we level the playing field by inviting some of the EL students to participate during the summer program. And we've done that at the elementary program through Encore. At the secondary level, we've done that in partnership with 916. And then, last year, we had collaborated with the city of Columbia Heights to use the City on the Hill and to be able to offer some English classes there. Although it was small, but it was when our new students from Afghanistan had arrived. And so that was the way that we continue to try to meet the needs of our students. Thank you, and that is the extent of our presentation.
Great, thank you. Questions? Michelle?
So I, sorry. So I guess I was wondering about the access to the state academic content. Because I do believe we had an educator come forward earlier and say it was kind of hard to get certain things for the classroom or things like that. Are we talking about access for students or teachers or both? And also, what does that include? Like, what are the standard things that they should be able to have access to?
So, two things. So I think when teachers or the teachers who spoke, I think one of the teachers talked about curriculum. So when it comes to EL, for teachers who are teaching EL, we do provide curriculum to support their teaching and learning. And I think some of the examples that you heard Sarah mention of resources that we've provided are books, dictionaries that they need to be able to teach students. But that also includes supplies like notebook, because different teachers use different materials that they want their students to have. Professional development that you've heard me talk about, it is one that, I think, from the example that was shared, Columbia Heights used to have a few EL students way back in the days, right? In the past five or 10 years, we've grown in number. And in the past two years, you just saw the data. So the classroom has become more diverse in terms of language. And so, there is some learning that needs to happen on the part of the teachers so that they can teach with EL in mind. And throughout our professional development, we've provided those strategies. And so, part of, it takes time, is the adjustment also for teachers who are teaching classrooms that are filled with English language learners.
Superintendent Stanwick?
Can I just add to what Executive Director Nimwe was mentioning? I think one, part of what you're asking is EL students in the mainstream. So according to the Minnesota LEAP Act, EL students are, there isn't really an exemption for graduation, for graduation requirements, accumulating credits. So while students are learning language, we, you know, 30 years ago, we would separate them completely and, you know, just teach ABCs and 1, 2, 3s. And really, when the Minnesota LEAP Act came about, it was about, it was really pushing students more into the mainstream. Some of us with an EL background feel like it's, might be a little too quickly being pushed into the mainstream, but that's, you know, we're trying to comply with the laws, of course. But, so students can graduate, you know, up until age 21, I think it is nowadays, 22, used to be 23, changes, but, so that's part of, that might be one accommodation. But really, our EL students, while they're learning English, also need to be accumulating, and I'm talking about high school. They need to be accumulating high school credit, graduation credits as well. So it is very tricky. So that means that in areas where we can co-teach, some of the mainstream general ed teachers get to have a co-teacher. And that helps with the language learning and the content learning. Sometimes that's not feasible, and that's where the professional development comes into play, where it's, you know, about vocabulary development, background knowledge, some of the things you all have learned in the science of reading, right? And so, it's very different for just a typical, let's say, high school teacher to now be confronted with this wave of newcomers, where they're used to teaching fluent English, for the most part, students in, let's say, like a 10th grade biology class. So it's very different now, but we are required, the students are required to get the same graduation credits.
Okay. Oh, also, I just wanted to say thank you to the homeschool liaisons. They do an amazing job, and I really value their presence in our schools. I know they're a huge help at North Park, where I'm mostly at, and where I see, you know, active engagement. I saw it at Valley View when I went over there for Family Game Night. It was amazing. So you guys are doing a good job with that.
Thank you, Michelle. Other questions? Julie?
Yeah, Director Nwembe, do, I noticed we were only mentioning Title III federal money. Is there any other specific money that is specific for EL education? I think, you know, my concern is that we've only increased our revenue stream by $6,000 in the last year, and our increase in students outweighs that, obviously. So what are the other revenue streams that we rely on to help our English learners?
Thanks for that question. So the Title III funding, as you saw, it's like $140,000, so it doesn't go very far. The district uses a combination of compensatory funding and general ed funding. You may have heard that the, last year, the Minnesota State Legislature gave some money that was supposed to help with the EL cross-subsidy. And so that funded about, I'd say, five teachers. And we're, you know, we have five more teachers this year as compared to last year plus some EAs. So our general fund, EL cross-subsidy, remains at about $1 million right now. And then the rest is made up of the compensatory funding, which funds a variety of things. Is that accurate, Director Hennigan? Okay.
That answers the question. Thank you.
And perhaps part of Title III, there is Title III Part A. And last year was the first time that Columbia Heights received about $40,000 because Columbia Heights, with maybe another 15 school districts, are experiencing AI volume of new students. And this year, we haven't received that money. They've told us that we'll receive about $30,000, but we've not seen it yet.
Thank you.
Mary?
Thank you so much for that. I have just two questions. So it's not in the presentation, but as the agenda item says, that we were serving, 36.8% of our school population was English learners. So we've grown from the beginning of October to now nearly 8%. Is that, is my math right on that for about? Yeah.
Where's the 36?
So it's 36.8 to 44.
Where's the 36 from?
It's in our, it's in the agenda item. So if you go back up, it says.
The Word document, the cover sheet?
Yeah, on the presentation. So it says, will be presented. As everybody clicks. So is that, so we've grown eight, about 8% in that? I know we've had a lot.
I have to look at the enrollment reports.
I mean, regardless, it's a massive leap. And I know that this has been happening because we've heard it from staff. I've heard it from students, too. So my one question is, you know, with this large increase in students coming in and needing support, what are you hearing from families and from staff and from students? Maybe that's different about what they need, what supports they might need? What makes these, you know, not even just this year, but just this moment in time, more difficult or even if there's any positives, like what are you hearing from people?
Can you restate your question?
What are you hearing from staff, from students, from families about their needs? Or what they, what can be done different, what's going well? Like, what are some things that you're hearing that maybe is different that you haven't heard before, since we have such an increase in our numbers?
So I think I can speak to staff. Because for families, when they enroll in the placements, and at least when we talk with them, it's the basic needs, clothing, food. And so, some of the support that we've provided is, you know, in this district, we've asked people who have clothes or shoes. And people have been bringing those items to the placement center, and we've been able to display them there. And so when family enroll, they're able to help themselves, and they take that in. Those resources are going fast. And so we also have a food pantry where for families who request in the placement center, we're able to provide that for them. As far as staff, I think Superintendent Stanwick alluded to it. It's a difficulty of seeing new language learners in greater numbers than what they were used to, and so providing that instruction. The second one will be, you know, this is unprecedented in the sense that usually by October, we enroll who we can, and then you're seeing numbers in like three or two. That's not the case right now. So what teachers are saying is that, let's say I had 20 students in my classroom, and then next week, three more are added, and the following week, five more are added. So those numbers are growing. And I've been teaching, and I'm making progress, then I have this new seven. And I've been teaching and I'm making progress, then I have this new seven who have just come. So, that difficulty of maintaining the pace is some of the things that the teachers are saying is difficult. And, you know, there is one more thing that I've never found an EL teacher who doesn't care. They are very caring. And so, there is that aspect from the teachers when they hear stories from the children in their classrooms, and then they see them in front of them, they really want them to do well. And so, there is that struggle because they care, that they want them to do well, and so, they are trying to adjust. So, those are some of the things that I have heard.
Thank you.
Other questions? Jessica?
Thank you very much for the presentation. The update's really helpful, I think especially timely in light of a lot of conversations we've been having as a board, in light of some of the community comment that we've received. So, thank you for that. I did have a question about the Title III funding and just wondering, the amount we receive, is that based solely on enrollment of identified EL students? Or are there other factors that go into that funding?
That's a loaded question, but Title I, that, excuse me, Title III funding is to serve EL students. And what happens, every October 1st, the Minnesota Department of Education takes a snapshot, right, of your current enrollment. And then, what they base your funding on for the following year is prior year. So, for example, all this growth we're seeing right now beyond October 1st, we're not receiving all that funding. We're receiving funding based on last year's count, which was less than what we have right now. And so, Title III is based on the number of EL students that you have to serve them. But I think Superintendent Stenvik also spoke about compensatory education, which is also taken into play to be able to support the needs that come with students whose English is not their first or second language.
Thank you for that. I think that's a really important point because those students are here now, right? And we need to serve them, and we need to support them now, even though we're not, that snapshot isn't accurate, a year old, right? Or a year-plus old.
Before you ask your next question, I want to comment on something that's related to that. I think it's important as we talk about funding. And this is, you know, especially as the board, as we talk about what our fund balance is and what our fund balance needs to be and where we're at. Because this compensatory funding that we have
Lunch forms.
is our free and reduced lunch forms, basically. And so, looking at what's happening, you know, in terms of having universal free lunch and families who are filling out the forms that are now called educational benefit forms, that's important. And I think the other thing that I want to mention, too, is, and correct me if I'm wrong, and maybe Director Hennigens needs to jump in, but the funding is challenging because it's not just the Title III funding that we get based on last year's numbers. It's our EL funding that we get that's based on last year's numbers. Am I, yeah, it's just numbers. So, and as Superintendent Stenvik mentioned earlier, we have, at our district currently, we have a $1 million cross subsidy, meaning we are paying $1 million out of the general fund to educate what we are currently doing with our EL students that is not being funded through EL education funding dollars, which means, and, you know, that when we have an increase of EL students, that cross subsidy grows because we are not receiving the funding in a timely manner. It's not like, you know, somebody looked at our enrollment and said, oh, my gosh, Columbia Heights Public Schools enrolled 200 additional EL Level 1 students, you know, at the start of the school year, we need to increase their funding. That's not happening. So, we're not going to get that funding until there's a look back, basically, and that's adjusted. So, that's why it's so critical for us to be mindful of what our fund balance is. Because we have to educate students in our district that live in our district. We cannot close schools to open enrollment unless we are at capacity. And even if we are at capacity, if we have students that are English language learners that are in our district, we must educate them as we should. But we may not be receiving funding for them for a very long period of time. And so, that comes out of our general fund, which impacts the fund balance. And so, these are critical things that we, as a board, have to look at and say, what is our fund balance? What are the funding that we receive? And how do we provide worlds of opportunity for each and every learner and support our staff at the same time, trying to get through the day some days and do what they can to educate our students with all of the resources that they have or that they need? So, critical budget discussions as we're having, and these things are all, just everything's wrapped up together and how impactful it is. Yes?
Point of clarification. The compensatory funding is traditionally reliant upon the lunch forms or the educational benefit forms. In the last, I would say, two years, there's a new mechanism where some of our students are also qualified through what's called direct certification through the county. So, that is helpful as well. I just wanted to clarify that.
Yes, I appreciate that. Thank you.
School finance is very complicated.
Yes. I won't pretend to be an expert on it, although I think after seven and coming on my 80 years with board, I've learned a lot. So, but I just wanted to, I think that was, I wanted to piggyback on your question about funding as it relates to some of the challenges that we are, we're all dealing with and specifically what we're seeing in our classrooms. I'll defer back to you.
It was a good time to interject because I was going to shift gears. So, that was like a perfect, perfect opportunity. I did, I'd want to talk a little bit or get a little more information about some of the Title III activities. You talk within, when we're talking about teacher support, you outlined both coordination and staff development. And I'm wondering if you could talk a little bit about the coordination activities and what that entails across our district?
Yep. So, I provide professional development to mainstream teachers, and I support the EL teachers in getting, figuring out what their needs are. Their highest need is, what they're saying is they need more teachers and support in that area. I also oversee the identification and the process of EL programming, making sure that they're identified correctly, and then also making sure that they're getting the services that they should be getting and making sure we're compliant with MDE. And then, also making sure our procedures for exit criteria are met and refusals are dealt with in the appropriate manner that MDE wants as well. So, I oversee, I make sure that we're MDE, we're following MDE guidelines as well.
Sure. Thank you. I was, it was confusing to me because I thought coordination was sort of like a bucket of activities separate from staff development. So, that's helpful.
Yep. So, I do that, and I do professional development.
Sure. And then, on the staff development side, I'm curious, you know, you mentioned that you've been, you work with buildings upon request for staff development. Are there particular areas of support that you're getting requests for?
I'm hearing a lot of feedback that teachers are wanting supports on how to reach newcomer students and differentiation strategies. And so, I've been trying to target building their knowledge on how to work with newcomers through various strategies that, to help them gain like understanding vocabulary, knowledge, and also scaffolding content to make it more accessible for EL students, and the importance of turn and talks and developing their oral language in order to help them start understanding text and also thinking through and developing their writing skills as well. So...
Thanks. And then, when you're engaged in that staff development work, are those, is that usually building wide or is it discipline-specific or both?
It depends. So, like my in-service days at the high school, I provide professional development to certain groups because other groups are training. So, like EL is not a part of it. They were a part of one session. And then, other groups are not a part of it because they have other training that they have to do. But then, I do all-staff development as well. So, I did that at North Park and Highland, and then I'm going to be doing that at CA tomorrow as well.
Great. Thank you. And then, Director Niemwe, you had mentioned students exiting from EL. And I'm just wondering if you have a sense of numbers on that. How many students are generally exiting EL programming? Is there a difference between the exit rate of elementary students, secondary students? What do we see there?
So, part of the access test, in about August, we receive back the data from MDE. And when we look at that data, we're able to see how many students exited and celebrate from each program. We certainly can look at that data and share back some information with the board.
That'd be great. I'd be interested to take a look at that. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Other questions? Julie?
So, do we have, we talk about staffing and all that. Do we have volunteers that help in EL classes at all to help support the teachers so that they're not overwhelmed? I mean, is there a process of pulling in volunteers from our community that may be bilingual or multilingual to help in those areas? What are we doing to maybe get people who are unpaid to assist in those classes?
Yeah. Volunteers, it's something that we've looked at. As a result of the Community Resource Fair that we had, one of the volunteers asked if we needed some help, and that's how we started teaching EL classes at North Park last year. And this year, she's continued as well. We've also received, some people have made inquiries and say they want to help, and that's why we've taken them up on their offer. But sometimes, people say they want to volunteer and then they don't. So, I wouldn't say that we've maximized all our effort in volunteering, but if you, you know, have some connection or awareness of some people want to do it, we can certainly follow up on it.
All right.
Michelle? I guess to piggyback on that, are there certain qualifications that someone needs to have if they're going to be a volunteer in that setting? Or, like, there might be something outside of school that may be easier, but like in the classroom setting, would they need certain things?
Yeah. So, when people are interested, if we are looking for EL volunteers, we definitely want people who can, who are fluent in English and Spanish or English in another language so that they can support the students. And then, we also, you know, conduct the background check before we take in volunteers. And sometimes, it's people who say, I just want to come and read to students. And so, we've also taken those volunteers. So, it depends on what people are willing to offer.
No educational requirements are needed?
No, we're not saying you need to have a bachelor, a PhD, or, yeah.
Any other questions?
Thank you for coming. And Corner, it was very nice to meet you. So, I'm glad you got to come as well. So, thank you all.
Nice meeting you all.
Thank you.
Next, we have Strategic Direction C with Director, Executive Director Niemwe and Director Sockel.
Chair Mueller, members of the board, Superintendent Stenvik. I'm here this evening with Executive Director Niemwe, and we are here to present the Strategic Direction C, Improve Our Daily Interactions With Students, Families, and Community. Of course, this is rooted in our mission of creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed. This evening, our presentation will be touching on all of our core values, community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. And that, of course, is always rooted in the board's equity statement. This is an informational update. There's no governance questions with this presentation. You're familiar with the strategic roadmaps. And so, we are, we are here with our, improving our daily interactions, as I mentioned. That's the portion we'll be focused on. The district operational plan metrics, so we receive input from communities, staff, students, and parents. This always helps us to develop our areas of continuous improvement. The baseline year was 2019, and we've continued to develop based off of that year.
I'm going to speak about the communications portion. So, every year, we do an annual communication survey. We went up from 99 participants to 101. They are from all of our schools, fairly proportionate. We have about 23 from the district office or district-wide, five from the family center, and then 14 to 15 from each of the elementaries, and the middle school, and 21 from the high school. So, we'll say it's a sampling of the staff. It's not, it's not every staff person that answers our communication survey. We are at that baseline level, 50 to 59%. We just barely made it into the 50% score of effective or very effective range. I want to share with you a couple of takeaways from the communication survey. Communication is important to people, right? And there's always room for improvement when it comes to communication. Something else that we noticed from the survey is it really varies depending on which department, which school, even which department within each school. The quality of communication varies. We want to standardize this more. This is something that we have ongoing conversations about, but there are some variations. So, the communication department, as mighty as we might be, we do not control the quality of communication throughout the district, though we do try to influence it. One of the ways that we influence it is with our weekly email, the CHPS update, which you all receive and all of the staff do as well. Staff find that to be helpful. They find that the every other week, Heights Net Recap, which just goes to staff, is also helpful. They really find what's also helpful are the meetings and the communications that they have within their buildings or departments. So, we want to make sure that that is timely and effective and really helps people to do their work well. The next C1.2 is about social media engagement. And here, I really have to give a shout out to Emma Butte. And just a reminder, she is part-time communications coordinator. She's also our adult enrichment and senior program coordinator for our community ed program. She and also Crystal Vitalschwartz do an outstanding job, in particular with our social media posts, and they share it. The social media posts that happen from the schools come out of the schools. So, the schools control their Instagram and Facebook. We then, as a district, share out what the schools do, but Emma doesn't do the social media for each of the schools. So, I just wanted you to be aware of that. If you notice different, like, oh, I hear a lot from this school or less from this school, that really is school-generated. But they do an excellent job with that. Points of contact. So, we push out a lot of internal communication with our, within our district, those internal stakeholders. That's where we're really at vision. We do a lot of communicating. Communication that the staff say that they get the communication through emails, through meetings, and also through communication from their supervisors. Submitted press releases to the media. We continue to write press releases and send them to The Life, The Northeastern, and The Star Tribune. And I thank my colleagues for quotes that they provide for those press releases. But we try to make those press releases interesting and always accompanied with a picture. Just this morning, I had a conversation with one of our local media to say, you know, when we send those press releases, we sure do like to see it get published. And the board did choose you as our official paper, kind of nudge, nudge. So, we don't control how often those submitted press releases get published, though we do encourage them in a friendly, gentle way.
Could you read that to us? Because both in board book and here, it's cut off that last measure.
Well, it's about the submitted press releases, seven, we get more about like four press releases posted per month. So, you can see, we're submitting more than double of what then gets published. And I should say that some of this is, when consolidated, when it used to be that the local paper was for Fridley and Columbia Heights, and now it's for Fridley, Columbia Heights, Spring Lake Park, Blaine, et cetera. So, there's only so much space. And so, that has diminished how much airtime we get.
So, the next session, I think family engagement is a theme tonight. So, I am reporting on how we communicate with families using technology platform. So, C.21, it's Parental Registered for Online Tools and CSO and others just for pre-K5. Happy to say, you know, as we entered this last year of this strategic plan, the elementary school nailed it. So, last year, we were at vision, and we are at vision again. And then, same thing, but communication for the secondary schools using ParentView and other platforms. We progressed from FY '22 where we were at I-concern, and now we're at baseline. And then, you know, you've, I think it was November, when the board received a presentation around the climate survey. So, again, here... So again, here, I'm reporting on parent participation on the climate survey. We are right about where we were last year, still at progressing in terms of participation rate. And finally, parents' sense of connectedness and engagement. This is where, when we ask parents, do you get enough information from your school, or do you know who at school you can talk to, when, if, and what? And we are again at progressing, similar to last year. So overall, when it comes to Strategic Direction C, I can say it is a good feeling that in the last year, we finally hit 4.0, and so we're at that, where we want to be, and we're working at it for the new strategic plan. So with that said, we conclude our presentation.
Thank you. Mary?
I think also continuing the theme of the night with our EL students and families, I just want to note for C 2.1, with parents registered for online tools such as Parent View and others, six through 12. If I remember correctly, Parent View does not translate into any other language besides English. Is that correct?
Not exactly.
Not exactly correct?
I guess it's web-based. Google Translate does translate the page. So, you know, like any webpage anybody would go to that needs to provide with translation, they most likely use Google Translate. Google Translate will translate that page.
Okay. So for everybody at home, Director Hennigan's just said that a lot of families, it seems like, use Google Translate to be able to use Parent View and those other things since it is online. I just want to note that I wonder how much some of our, like the increase in our EL families and students has made, and this not being as accessible for people using, that are fluent in another language, maybe are struggling a little bit more with that. Are we, I think this is something that we're talking about, switching to different, a different, possibly switching to a different medium in order to support more languages? Is that?
That's not on the table right now. Part of the onboarding that the EL department does with the homeschool liaison, so they have monthly onboarding for our new families, part of that onboarding class or classes, series of classes, is around accessing online tools that the school uses. And so things like CSO is translated. And then with the Google Translate, it's a setting. So when I'm working with parents, they've already like preset that on their phone. So any webpage, it's auto-translated is how that works.
Got it.
So, yeah.
Yeah, I just, I know the discrepancy, and I know that we've talked about this before. And I don't want people to think, oh, well, you're not doing a good job. It's that we're using the tools that we have that maybe are imperfect for that purpose. Because Parent View is really, it's an important thing for families to be able to track progress, for students to be able to track progress. And so I just wanted to call out that, that number and have a little bit more discussion around it. So thank you, everybody.
Yeah, one of, one of the things that the homeschool liaison do is continue to remind parents that if they have any questions with translation, they can contact the school. And then this year, one of the other things that we changed, so the robocall always went in English for attendance, but now parents, who's Spanish is their first language, are able to receive that communication in Spanish.
Wonderful. Thank you.
That's good. Other questions? All right. Thank you both. Next, we'll move on to action items. And its first item is the Northeast Bank. Northeast Bank Corporate Authorization Resolution. Director Hennigan's.
Thank you, Chair Mueller, members of the board, and Superintendent Stenvik. This evening, the first item that I have is, as stated, was the Northeast Bank Cooperative Authorization Resolution, or corporate. And this is kind of an annual resolution. As board members change positions, two very important positions are the clerk and the treasurer. And if any of those positions change, then we need to change things with the banks, and we need to change signatures that go on the checks. So we did have a change in clerk. So now we have these resolutions that we need to change. And so this evening, seeking approval for the Corporate Authorization Resolution for Northeast Bank.
All right, so before us, we have the Corporate Authorization Resolution for Northeast Bank. Mary?
I'd like to make a motion to waive the reading of this resolution as it is very lengthy and can be found on our website, I believe.
In Board Book, yep. And in the room, I believe, too. All right. We have a motion to waive the reading of the Corporate Authorization Resolution for Northeast Bank. Is there a second?
Yes, second.
Second by Laura. Any discussion? Hearing then, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of waiving the reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Point of order?
Yes.
Resolution. Roll call.
This is not to waive, this is a motion to waive the reading. So we can do it this way. Thank you. So we, okay, opposed, abstained, motion carries. All right, next, we will move on to the resolution. So can I get a motion to approve the Corporate Authorization Resolution?
So moved.
Jessica, in a second.
Second.
Second by Mary. Any discussion? Hearing then, we'll proceed to vote. This is a resolution. So Michelle, will you do the roll, please?
Yes. Mueller?
Aye.
Hul?
Aye.
Maderas?
Aye.
Granland?
Aye.
Palmer?
Aye.
Petway?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Resolution passes. Next, Director Hennigan's has the Bank, US Bank Authorizing Resolution.
Thank you, Chair Mueller, members of the board, and Superintendent Stenvik. Again, the same as the previous resolution, just making signature changes for US Bank. US Bank is our premier bank that we're using for direct deposit. And so, again, just seeking approval to pass this resolution, and we can update those signatures.
All right, we have the US Bank Authorization Resolution.
I would like to make a motion to waive the reading of this resolution as well.
Okay, so we've got a motion to waive the reading of the US Bank Authorization Resolution. Have a second?
Enthusiastic second.
A second. If anybody would like to see the lengthy bank terminology resolution before us, I appreciate you all. Second by Jessica. Is there any discussion? All right, next, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of waiving the reading, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion passes. Thank you all. Everybody appreciates that. Next, we have the Resolution, US Bank Authorization Resolution. Can I get a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Michelle, in a second.
Second.
Second by Julie. Any discussion? All right, we will vote, and again, this is a resolution. Michelle, do the roll call, please.
Yes. Mueller?
Aye.
Granland?
Aye.
Hul?
Aye.
Maderas?
Aye.
Palmer?
Aye.
Petway?
Aye.
Thank you. Resolution passes.
Thank you.
Next, we have Director Bennett joining Director Hennigan's for the Discontinuance of Programs and Positions Resolution.
Chair Mueller, members of the board, Superintendent Stenvik. Presented to the school board tonight is the Annual Resolution in which the school board directs the superintendent administration to consider the discontinuance of programs or positions, de-fectuate economies in the school district and reduce expenditures, make recommendations to the school board for the discontinuance of programs, curtailment of programs, discontinuance of positions, or curtailment of positions in order to balance the school district budget. Again, this is an annual resolution which directs the superintendent administration to start looking at these efficiencies.
Great, thank you. All right, this is a resolution. I will read this resolution. The resolution directing the administration to make recommendations for reductions in programs and positions and reasons therefore. Whereas the teacher master agreement has not been settled for the 2023-2025 school years, resulting in financial unknowns. And whereas the school district continues to have a special education cross-subsidy of over $4 million, requiring the school district's general fund to cover this obligation. And whereas the school district continues to have an English learner cross-subsidy of approximately $0.8 million cost, requiring the school district's general fund to cover this obligation. And whereas the new voter-approved operating levy funding will be allocated next school year and remains well below the metro average this school year and next. And whereas the school district budget is based on projected enrollment. And whereas the financial condition of the school district is dependent on federal, state, and local revenues, and these have not been sufficient to cover the total cost of ownership for school district expenses. And whereas transportation costs are projected to increase. And whereas COVID-19 pandemic brought multiple years of unforeseen expenditures, and CARES Act funding ended. And whereas the school district has an obligation to balance the budget on an annual basis and remain within the school board fund balance policy. And whereas reductions in expenditures and school finances may include discontinuance of positions and discontinuance or curtailment of programs if necessary. And whereas a determination must be made as to which faculty and staff contracts and programs may be terminated and not renewed, and which licensed staff may be placed on unrequested leave of absence without pay or fringe benefits in affecting discontinuance of positions and programs. Now therefore, be it resolved, be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District Number 13, Columbia Heights hereby is direct the superintendent of schools and administration to consider the discontinuance of positions or programs to effectuate economies of the school district and reduce expenditures, make recommendations to the school board for the discontinuance of positions, curtailment of positions, discontinuance of programs, curtailment of programs, in order to balance the school district budget. Can I get a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Julie, in a second.
Second.
Second by Laura. Any discussion? Mary?
This is always the hardest resolution to come, one of the hardest, just because of the challenges that our school district and other school districts around the metro and state and country are facing because of a lack of investment in our schools. And not, and by that, I mean the federal government is not covering the things that they said that they were going to cover, that we have increased expenditures, that school finance is so difficult, and so many different areas, and not, not enough. So this, having it read out, is important and is just incredibly sad. It doesn't get any easier. I mean, you've been doing this for a long time, too. So just, it's important, but it hurts, so.
Well, and I think that part of this is, we have to be fiscally responsible. We have a finite number of dollars to utilize. We are, we are funded, as it states in the resolution, by federal, state, and local dollars. We don't have something that we can sell, that we can raise the price of when, when prices go up. But we've, we've got a job to do, and I think it's, you know, important to note that, you know, kind of one of the items in here is our, our teacher contract has not yet been settled. We have $4 million in a special education cross-subsidy. We have the $0.8 million in EL, but we've also just talked about the continued increase in our EL students. What we have to do as a board is we have to make sure that the administration has the tools that they need to find the efficiencies, to do everything that we can. And while we greatly appreciate our voters who approved our levy and provided much-needed additional funding for our community, our per pupil contributions from local tax dollars is still well below the metro average. And we're going to continue to do the best we can with what we have, and we understand the economics of our community. We're going to make that work the best that we can, and that means that we have to look for as many efficiencies as we can as well.
Any other discussion?
Chair Mueller, I really appreciate your comments because I recognize that for folks who might be watching this board meeting, some of the clauses in this resolution maybe cause some cognitive dissonance against what we've heard in terms of, you know, record spending coming out of the legislature, right? Or record investment, and looking at our levy questions here in Heights, and we are very, very thankful for that. And the impact of those things means that we've been able to make some progress on some of those cross-subsidies and on other areas, but there are still trade-offs that have to be made looking at some of these very real challenges that continue to lie ahead of us. So I appreciate you kind of laying that out for, for everyone in the community. I would note that this does, as Director Granland mentioned, kick off a very challenging process that has become part of what we do on an annual basis here in the district. And I'm wondering if we could just, I just want to discuss a little bit about, maybe a reminder of what the timeline looks like for this, because I know that before I was on the board, watching this discussion as a parent, it would often feel like this resolution was approved, and then that went into like a black box, and then out the other end came some budget cuts down the line. So maybe if we could just have a reminder about what the process looks like from here, and when we might expect to see recommendations come forward to the board for consideration.
Great question. I'll turn it over to both of you.
I could start. We do start meeting principals, directors, and we really look at class sizes. Usually Director Hennigan's gives us a amount that we have to cut. It's with the goal of trying to get to that amount. We have, under Superintendent Stenvik's leadership, changed how we let staff know if they're being non-renewed, which I think has really helped. We used to wait until the end of May, and everybody would find out at one point. Where now, we do, we do two rounds of non-renewals. So the first one is long-term subs that are an automatic cut. If you're a tier one, you're an automatic cut. Performance, and really letting that second group know, like, we're trying to save your job as much as we can, and we're doing everything we can. So we really do try by mid-May so people know whether or not they have a position for the next school year. We have to let them know by June 1st. That's the deadline date. But I think that two-tier approach has really helped, and the unions appreciated it. We've gotten feedback that they do appreciate that.
Couple, a couple of points. One, it is a difficult process, and we, we really strive to protect staff's privacy and right to their privacy. Additionally, though, if, if a whole program needs to be cut or curtailed or reduced or eliminated, that triggers community involvement. And so we have, in the last four years, cut at least one program where we, of course, it was during pandemic. So we held a Zoom meeting, a community meeting, and got, you know, informed people of what we were thinking, parents, community members, and got feedback via Zoom. And then, you know, be able to provide that rationale for what this, if we're eliminating a program. And then the very following day, or was it right before? Before that meeting happened, we informed the particular teachers that they would have a job just in a different, you know, in a different capacity. So really trying to make sure that we're communicating with staff when we're sure. But then also weighing that out with communicating with the community and the families if, if it's going to be impactful for their, their students.
And I do think, you know, impactful to their students is really the key part of that because when you're looking at cuts that are being made, families often see cuts as elimination of programs, even if it's not a full elimination of program, if it impacts access for, for their students. So whatever, in whatever way that is, if it's, you know, we're providing a program less often or at different grade levels or things like that. So just thinking about how we share what we can with the community about what we're considering in ways that, as you said, still protect the, the privacy of our staff. And I think that that's tricky. But I also know that in past years, Superintendent Stenvik, you've come forward, or Director Bennett, you've come forward and kind of talked generally about, like, here are the principles, right, that we consider when we're looking at making budget cuts, right? We want to stay as far away from the classroom as possible, or what, what you're hearing in terms of sort of general themes of where cuts might be made from, from buildings or other places. And so And so I would just, I guess, encourage the district administration to, I guess, find ways to repeat that level of communication as we move forward into this new cycle, whatever that might look like.
Laura.
Well, I have kind of a couple of comments. One is that we do do this every year. I really do appreciate getting this, getting a lot of these decisions made as soon as we possibly can. I think it's less disruptive. It definitely gives our staff, who we value, if they have to, they have more time to settle unemployment. Of course, if the position opens up again, they may already have found something else, so it kind of hurts for us, but I think it's better overall. And now we do also, when we're looking at discontinuing a program, we are taking a look at some of the data to make sure it's an economic return on investment. You know, that's what we're putting into it. We are actually getting, you know, quantitative results back out. I know we did several looks at the Avid program to make sure that that was producing the benefits of our investment. This is a really long and tedious process, but I know you're all going to do the very, very best you can for our students and for our staff, and I appreciate it. It's going to be a lot of, it's going to be a lot of work.
I just want to make a comment that this is my eighth year on the board, and Laura's got more than me. We've done this every year that I've been on the board, which means every year we've had to, we've had to cut. And I believe we've cut roughly a million dollars a year from, over, you know, the last eight years. And with the historic funding that we've received, that came with historic mandates, and the very generous and appreciated voter approved repeal and replace operating levy, we're still here. So I want us all to continue to have conversations with our state and federal legislators about what is and isn't working in school funding. I think, you know, in our recent audit reports showing the dollars that we spend on administration on a per pupil basis are less than what our neighboring districts are spending, yet we're still here. I'm hoping one day, when I'm not on the board, you all are not having this very difficult conversation on this date in January. And that someday we don't have to look at cutting programs and positions because quite honestly, this year, I'm not sure what's left. I think there, any cuts, curtailments, as much as we have tried to keep them as far away from the classroom as possible, we're not really, it's going to be impactful. So just continue conversations about, again, special education cross subsidy. I mean, that's kind of a big, that's four million dollars of unfunded special education mandates for our district. Four million dollars a year. So we would not have to cut a million dollars this year if we had the appropriate funding. Any other discussion?
All right, we will proceed to vote. This is, I do have a motion and a second, right? On this one?
Yes, you do.
Right, we did that?
We had this.
Yep. Okay, just want to make sure. Since this is a resolution, it is a roll call vote. Michelle.
Yes, Mueller.
Aye.
Granland.
Aye.
Madeiras.
Aye.
Who?
Aye.
Palmer.
Aye.
Petway.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Thank you. Director Hennigens, we have a bid authorization.
Thank you, Chair Mueller, members of the board, and Superintendent Stenavik. So we are looking to do some improvements to our, I'll call it dishroom, ware washing space at the high school. It, the machine itself isn't, what's that?
Can you talk more into the microphone?
Oh, I'm sorry. The, so it's the ware washing space within Columbia Heights High School. This is just a request to post a bid and solicit bids. We, the dish machine that's in there right now is continually under repair and very difficult to deal with. And the design of the space is really for two different lines of people working in that space, which is not the reality of what we have. So we're going to do some redesign of that space, make it more efficient for kitchen staff and replace that machine. And obviously you can anticipate that a dish machine for a high school size of a thousand plus students is rather expensive. And so the rework that we'll do around that space, we'll go over that bid for that hundred and seventy-five thousand. Thus our request for bid authorization. And then more information, specifics on what we're going to do will come once we get those bids results. And I'll present that as an informational item in a presentation with some pictures and stuff.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to authorize the publishing of legal notice of the solicitation of bids for the high school ware washing space?
So moved.
Mary and a second.
Second.
Second by Jessica. Any discussion?
I don't know that I've ever heard it referred to as ware washing before, so I had a lot of fun trying to figure out what that was beforehand. So I'm guessing it is a dishwasher plus?
It's just the ware washing space is, yeah, it's a dishroom, dishwashing space, dish machine.
Got it. So like in the cafeteria where they're making food and cleaning up after like.
It's a separate space. It's just a big machine that we throw the trays in, the silverware in.
Got it. Okay, well, learned a new word today. Thank you very much.
Okay. I just have a question about what fund does this come out of?
This comes out of, partially it'll come out of long-term facility maintenance, partially it'll come out of the food service fund. Food service fund can pay for the equipment, so the machine itself will come out of the food service fund. And then part of it will come out of the capital projects levy. Because there will be a couple of components that aren't eligible for long-term facility maintenance dollars that will move into capital projects levy. So really it's three different funds that will support this.
Okay, that was my question too, Laura. Thank you. Michelle.
I think mine kind of went into that a little bit, I guess, because it said space as well.
Yeah.
So I was kind of wondering what that, because it's not just the machine. So I was wondering what we were talking about. Are we talking about enhancing the entire space or just by the machine?
It'll enhance the space. It'll enhance the flow of the space. Currently, it's got two windows. We don't utilize two windows. So it'll turn the machine and open up the space. There's a hot water heater in there that's for the machine. The hot water heater will move out. The booster heater is separate. It'll get moved into within the machine. So there's things within the space. The walls within the space will get refaced and with just a basic ceramic tile. And the ceiling, we don't have to do a whole lot with. We can just resurface the ceiling. There's a lot of piping that was not really necessary in that space anymore because of the things that were moving around that'll get taken out, which will open up the ceiling a little bit. There might be, have to be some slight adjustments to lighting within the space just via code. And as we move things around, they'll get their little meter out and they'll make sure that we have the proper lighting. So we might have to make some adjustments there, but some minor ventilation moves. It's, the ductwork's already there, but just going to maybe change where the vent comes out and the size of it. So nothing like real, real major, but it will definitely enhance the space.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Any other discussion? All right, here we go. We'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank Director Hennigens. Next, we have.
I know we passed. Could I still ask a question?
Yes.
I just wanted to know if the same place would be doing all the work or like?
Oh, if the same contractor would be doing all of the work?
Yeah.
Director Hennigens, do you want to answer that quick?
Sorry.
It'll be awarded to a single contractor and in all likelihood, they'll sub out certain components of it. So there may be others involved, but it'll be awarded to a single contractor.
Okay, thank you so much for your question. Thank you.
All right, next, under action items, we have our resolution to reinstate primary elections. So if you recall, last year, due to the need of having a special election, which was only a school district election, we removed our requirement to have primary elections, as discussed at the work session. And at that time, during the discussion, we talked about revisiting that here in January. So in terms of bringing back primaries to school board elections. So I do have a resolution here, which I will read. Resolution regarding school district primary election system relating to special elections. Whereas Minnesota Statute 205A dot zero three states that school board of, that the school board of, okay, hold on one second. I should have read this again earlier. Whereas Minnesota Statute 205A dot zero three states that the school board of a school district may by resolution adopted by April fifteenth of any year decide whether to choose nominees for school board by a primary. And whereas the school board of Columbia Heights Independent School District Board Number, School District Number Thirteen Board has a priority to govern the district with a commitment to transparency. And whereas there are local, state, and federal elections taking place in November twenty twenty-four, which would result in primary election that would share part of the cost of special election with other parties. And whereas the board passed a resolution on April eleventh, twenty twenty-three to eliminate primary elections for the November twenty twenty-three election, which was a special election for one vacant seat. And whereas the board passed the resolution on eliminating primaries in accordance with the state statute, which eliminates primaries for all ensuing elections of board members in that school district until a resolution requiring primaries is passed. And whereas the board carefully considered the resolution to eliminate primaries and agreed that primary elections for non-special elections were an important part of the election process. Now therefore be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number Thirteen State of Minnesota as follows. The board resolves to reinstating primary elections for all elections of board members with the exception of special elections. The board will continue to assess primary elections for special elections on an as-needed basis to best govern the district with a commitment to fiscal responsibility. Three primary elections shall be reinstated for the twenty twenty-four election cycle and the school district primary election shall be conducted pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section 205A dot zero three as amended and the Minnesota election laws generally. The school district clerk is authorized and directed to take actions as necessary to be prepared to conduct primary elections.
I get a motion to approve this resolution.
So moved.
Laura and a second.
Second.
Second by Mary. Any discussion? Mary.
So this resolution to reinstate primary elections, so if we do not have the number to trigger a primary, which I believe is the number of seats plus two, three? Times two. It's, oh, times two. Yep, sorry. Thank you. So if we do not meet that requirement, we will not have a primary. This just lets us be, like, we have, we can have it if we do meet that criteria, and it's important for us to talk about this since we did talk about the special election. So I just wanted to sort of toss that out. So if we don't have enough people running, that's okay, but this covers us just in case.
And I think we had a fairly lengthy conversation at our work session and earlier in April of twenty twenty-three when we were trying to decide whether or not we were going to have primary elections. And I think that really to summarize the conversations is that we felt primary elections were very important to the election process in our community and for the school board and for transparency of board and to make sure that the community has the ample opportunity to select the right candidate to serve on the board. In essence of, in just understanding where our financial responsibilities were last year, we suspended primaries as we, the school district had one seat available. And we did wind up adding the levy session, levy questions. But it was just a school board only election. And so the conversation that we then had on our work session this week, or excuse me, last week, was that we do feel that primaries are an important part of election process. And it was important to the board to come back to this, to this meeting and to basically reinstate primaries. Did I summarize that enough? That seems really wordy, but I think for anybody watching at home, very good conversations happened last year when we made the decision to not have primaries and then later to revisit this and know this is an important part of elections process for our district. Anybody want to add anything else? Discussion, Laura?
I just have a further comment as well is, in addition to that, it's also pulling back the polling stations. So that's another fiscal, fiscally responsible thing to do is only having the two polling stations during any type of, when we are completely footing the cost and we are the only thing on the ballot. That is kind of the restriction. So I'm glad to see the primaries going forward again, especially because this should be a lot more involved year with a lot more people, you know, participating in the process. This gives them another opportunity to voice their opinions and support their candidates.
Yeah, I think it's important to note too, there are very few school districts that actually hold primary. Most of them have gotten rid of their primary elections, but we have found that it is important to have those primaries, so. Jessica.
I think that the resolution is very well written and it represents well the discussion that we've had. And I appreciate that from the perspective of not only like, you know, memorializing the discussion that we've had, but to provide future boards with information about why we made the decisions that we did. And that I think that that's going to help the board moving forward in considering primaries in the case of special elections. So thank you to your work for putting that together.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All right, as this is a resolution, we'll do a roll call vote. Michelle.
It's a fun night for me.
Yes, it is. Between me reading resolutions and you doing roll calls.
Mueller.
Aye.
Granland.
Aye.
Madeiras.
Aye.
Who?
Aye.
Palmer.
Aye.
Petway.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Thank you all. Next on our agenda is board topics. Anybody have any board topics? Yes, Mary.
I just want to say earlier I said robotics, we had a robotics team make it to state. State tournament will be President's Day weekend, so the sixteenth and seventeenth evening on Friday and then all day on Saturday. More information will be coming, but could not be prouder of our team and all of our teams. So hopefully people will be able to make it. So mark your calendars now.
Okay, thank you. Other board topics. Michelle.
I just wanted to speak more about the nine sixteen tours at our subcommittee meeting. I mean, we may not go into everything because we're, I think we're going to wait. But this was something that was important for us to make sure we got out at the table so that, so that all the board members knew that there was an email sent out and that there are tours that can be signed up for. And that it's an important part of what we're doing with the nine sixteen and our partnership. And we just want to make sure everybody knows that our presence is important and that it's not, as we're getting out into the community, we also want to make sure we focus on our school district and our partnerships as well. I'm very interested to go see what Laura's been talking up so much for the last year. So I'm very interested and I hope that everybody else is as well.
Thank you.
Yep, for sure.
And one thing to add to that is when we received it, it's very nice because it goes out until May, so it gives us ample time to be able to rearrange our schedules and find time to be able to tour our partner site.
Has anyone signed up yet? Okay. How does it work? Because for people who look at it and go, there's only one number there, like, do we need to go in and?
No, so it tracks our email. So I got information about it. Last year I attended a tour at Metro Heights and I just signed up in that spreadsheet and got the information that I needed.
So just write it in.
Yeah, you just write your information right in the Google sheet.
Gotcha. Because I was like, okay, there's only one.
But I'm able to attend, I think, three or four this year. I'm really looking.
I'm really looking forward to it.
Awesome.
Laura. I would actually like to add too, that, you know, keep in mind that these, these particular buildings here, these are, I mean, although 916 is a separate district, these are our buildings. We own a part of these buildings and these programs. It is part of, it is part, I mean, we, we have a stake in this. It's not, it's not just someplace else that is really cool and, you know, we can participate in. We should be really proud of the, especially of the, of the different supports that we are giving literally the most, the most, the students with the most difficulties. We're giving them dignity of space and opportunity to grow, you know, and be able to succeed expectations and they're accomplishing that, you know? And that's because of the support of previous boards, previous administrations, and a whole lot of work by a whole lot of teachers and staff that have helped really put these, design these schools and put them together. So it is really, I definitely recommend, I mean, I would love to, a couple of years back, we actually went as a board, you know, but our schedules are so chaotic. I definitely recommend getting out and at least seeing the three that are surrounding us. That would be Metro Heights, Carner Blue and the Capitol and Cora Education Center, the old Capitol View site. I have stories about that one, which I will be also happy to tell you about the difficulty on getting that particular project together. And it has several wonderful programs that our students are participating in and are being successful.
Thank you, Laura.
I'm pretty.
Like I said.
Yeah, we're, and we're glad that you are so passionate about it.
But they're, but they belong to, they belong to us, you know, and to our students. They do, they really do.
Thanks for pointing that out.
Yeah, absolutely.
I just have one brief plug that tomorrow evening is, it's like a dream come true, you guys. This is a long time, long time in the making, you know, back in, was it 2010? No, before then, we were awarded the VH1 Save the Music Foundation grant and, oh, sorry. But I'm going to pass it off to you. I was waiting and I didn't hear anything, so.
It's okay. Well, we're both very passionate about VH1 Save the Music, but tomorrow there is a band concert and at the high school.
Not just any.
Not just any band concert. At the high school at 7:00 PM. And all of the fifth grade band students will be playing together and all of the middle school students, band students will be playing together and all of the high school band students will be playing together. And then all of the students, five through 12, will be playing together. So it is going to be an amazing event, just hard work of these students and their teachers. So I'm really, that was my, my big plug too. I don't know if you want to say anything else about it, but it's, it's going to be a fantastic event.
So I, at robotics, I talked to Mr. Burkus, who talked about this, and I said, my gosh, how are they all going to fit on the stage in the PAC? As many other people may be wondering, they're not. Nope, it's going to be on our wonderful, brand-new gym floor at the high school. So super excited about that, but, yeah, that was a, that was a sort of a question. I was like, how is that going to work? It's.
I'm glad you actually asked that, because I was wondering, because I'm pretty sure just the Columbia Academy band, like.
Oh, my gosh, yes.
Would overflow that stage.
Is there a fee?
No. No. Seven o'clock tomorrow night at the Forum Art Center.
Couple other things I have for us, just remember that Monday, because this is an off-meeting for us, on Monday, the 29th, we have our joint meeting with the Columbia Heights City Council that is at the Columbia Heights City Hall, which is in their new location. So make sure you are there. That's at 6:00 PM on Monday, the 29th. And then just a reminder that we have our Science of Reading second module that we'll discuss at our work session on the 20th.
Any other board topics? All right, well, thank you all for your time. I will adjourn at 8:11.